Good. All right. Well, I'd like to call to order the study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for December 6th, 2021. Thank you all for joining us. We'll let the record state that all of our city councilors are here tonight. Thank you all very much. We have one action item or study item on our agenda is 38th Avenue, West Street Improvements from Kipling to Youngfield Street. And as we do with all of our meetings, we will start with citizen comment on any item on the agenda. So that's the one item on the agenda. So if anyone is here that would like to speak on that item, you may do so now. And I'll ask our clerk to check and see if anyone online has raised their hands and would like to speak.
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I don't see anybody coming forward. Well, I do see someone coming forward, so. Okay. Our first speaker tonight is Mr. Guy Namiach. If you would please give us your first name, last name, spell your last name, give us an address.
Guy Namiach.
Mayor. Thank you.
N-A-H-M-I-A-C-H. 3650 Ward Road, Wheat Ridge. Great subject. So 15 years, 15 years I've lived in Wheat Ridge on Ward and 38. 15 years of listening to citizens and politicians and engineers talk about 38, but never my 38, not the sexy part of 38. So, but on our side of 38, 15 years of watching kids ride their bikes to school, fighting traffic, including my own. 15 years of past politicians and engineers pushing for stormwater as a condition for sidewalks, and still nothing gets done. 15 years of broken glass and nails on the world's skinniest bike lane, sometimes six inches wide. Citizens have asked for just sidewalks, like maybe even on one side of the street to start with. Let's start with that. We are lucky that no one has been injured. Being part of the NRS, we've talked to a lot of people that wanted to keep the rural feel of Wheat Ridge, and we're okay with one side of 38 having a sidewalk. I know the engineers will tell you that it can't be done, but sometimes you need to listen to the people that live there. This mayor, this council, you guys have been awesome, like just in line, just pushing forward, voting, like all green lights. I don't think I've ever seen so many green lights. Please do something. It's time for sidewalks on 38. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak tonight, but if you're here who would like to speak, or if you're online and would like to speak, raise your hand and we'll bring you into the meeting. And I don't see anybody else with their hand raised or here in the, in the city council chambers. So we will conclude our citizens' right to speak and go to our first agenda item. This is item number one. And this is 38th Avenue West Street Improvements from Kipling Street to Youngfield Street. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
We do. We, we have Ken Johnstone here tonight, our community development director, and Steve Nguyen, our engineer. And Mayor and Council, this, this item, as you know, is, is an item on your street budget plan priority for this year. And we didn't get, we didn't have a lot of discussion at the retreat last February on exactly what this looks like or what this means. And we, we did hear both West and East 38th Avenue, though, as part of the discussion. But as you know, that's a huge corridor. And so tonight, we are breaking it down and bringing forward just the West portion from Kipling West. And then next year, we'll have a, an agenda item on 38th Avenue from Wadsworth East. So tonight, Ken and Steve are both here tonight to propose a, a, some action steps forward to bring back potential design and community process to determine what 38th Avenue West should look like. Ken?
Yeah, thanks, Patrick. I, I don't really have a whole heck of a lot to add. We've, we've, we've taken a kind of a high level approach, as, as Patrick mentioned, advancing sidewalks on 38th Avenue, I think was actually the verbiage in your strategic plan. And as Patrick noted, we've broken that into these two, what we think are logical segments. One that we've talked a lot about over the years, 38th Avenue West, or East, which we, you know, often also refer to as our main street in various planning documents over, over the years. And then 38th Avenue West, which obviously I know Ms. Weaver and Mr. Stites, right, you know, you've heard from your constituents and in, in your district in some of your community outreach that sidewalks are a huge need, better bike pad facilities. So I think that really would be a big part of the focus of a design process for 38th Avenue West is improving the bike pad facilities. That said, we, you know, we, we would also want to, as a transportation project, take a look at a traffic study and, and see whether any additional vehicular capacity or, or other, you know, kind of vehicular issues are, need to be addressed as well in terms of any kind of intersection improvements. Certain segments of the, the, the road have been updated over the years, mostly on the, the western portion of that as part of adjacent developments. So not, you know, perhaps not everything on the, on the corridor needs to be touched, but, but certainly there's some pretty significant needs. As noted by the speaker, there are fairly significant drainage issues as well. So, you know, from a, a design perspective, you know, it is going to be necessary to take a look at kind of the, the vertical and the horizontal profile and a dis, you know, not just like being able to put in a sidewalk for certain sections is going to be, it's going to be a little more challenging than that. So we do think it will be important to bring in a, a design consultant to support this effort. From a staff perspective, we're certainly ready to, to resource that as a priority in, in 2022, starting from the beginning of the year, if so directed by council. So we're ready to, to resource it accordingly from a staff perspective. And we have a, you know, kind of a framework of a scope of work that we've developed that we would need to flesh out just a little bit more in order to be able to get a design consultant on board and go out for either an RFQ or an RFP. But again, we're prepared to do that early in 2022 if, if that's council's direction. And as Patrick noted, we, we believe that, you know, your, part of your priority was also to revisit 38th Avenue East again later in the year. And we're prepared to have that discussion. It's on our future agenda, or your future agenda, to talk about later in 2022 as well. So we didn't try and get too far in the weeds in terms of, you know, what the design process would look like. Really felt it most appropriate to just get in front of you and say, is this the segment? Is this the priority? And, and if it is, tell us so, and, and we'll, we'll roll with that direction.
Great. We'll take questions. Start with Ms. Hulteen and then go to, go to Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you. My first question is actually, is it possible for us to pull up a map of what we're talking about? I know we won't really, I, I thought maybe we'd be able to look at that tonight. I think it might be really helpful because having, I'm going to save more of my comments for later, but having worked with the Activate 38 coalition and extensively studying this particular corridor, I think it's really important for council to understand some of the, the transportation constraints that are unique to this corridor when we're talking about what it is that we're going to be looking at improving in, in terms of the act of transportation, so the walking and biking. So if we could pull up, oh, look, that's me. If we could pull up a map, I think it would be really helpful, at least for my comments later. So I'm going to hold back just a little bit because I know way too much about this corridor, so I'm going to let others speak before me. Thank you.
Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think that, I think it's, this is an appropriate break on where to look at these two different pieces of the same corridor. Part of the challenges for Harlan, Harlan to Wadsworth on 38th Avenue is that a lot of those are businesses with extremely long curb cuts. My particular property is also one of them. And so looking at how to work with the businesses to address things like the long curb cuts is one issue for the East, where the West side is a little more straightforward. It's a little more residential along the side of the roads than it is down on the main street. And I support having a, a safe place for people to walk, ride, and roll through in our community. So I support both, I support it being split up, and I support both having, looking at the street improvements on both sides, knowing that it's going to be a different job. It's going to be a different project with different priorities and different strategic solutions. And I'll, I support both of them.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Councilmember Hoppe, for, for bringing up both of those things. I too support the separation of them. And, and I just really appreciate us focusing on the West side because, and I also appreciate calling up a map right now. And, and Mr. Goff, you are welcome to zoom in on my property if you'd like, if you like, or Parfait and 38th. But just to sort of remind everybody of some of the issues between, what is it, Sims, sort of, Sims and, well, all the way to Kipling, there, there is no curb and gutter. And, and there is such a small area that is been patched and, and all sorts of things. It's, it's almost impossible to walk. It's almost impossible to ride anything. And, and, and so to, to Ms. Hoppe's point, they are very different issues. But we have a really rough patch of a, of a pretty major street going through our city that is carrying buses. It's carrying tons of kids on all sorts of mechanisms. And, and my question, Mr. Johnstone, is, is drainage is a big issue in this area as well, because it's, it's a little, for those of you who don't know, it's, it's an open gutter system, basically, on, on the, the south side of the, the street. And that's why I was saying, so, so if you look, that great. So behind my mailbox is that ditch. And essentially, as Mr. Namiach can probably attest to, the water comes down 38th, and, and there are several ditches as well that are crossing 38th. And so sometimes those are overflowing and with different issues. But, but, and, and I want everybody to notice that between all of these, these driveway curvins, there are culverts, is that what they're called? Culverts underneath all of these driveways that are perpetually getting clogged because it's an open, it's an open ditch situation. So it's, it's pretty critical. There are many times when, if we have a significant rain, many of us are out with shovels. I'm seeing a constituent nodding their heads with shovels trying to dig out these culverts so it doesn't back into the yards. And this particular area is the lowest part between Wadsworth and, excuse me, between Kipling and Youngfield. And so it's this giant river that's coming down that is also going onto the street, but mostly spilling into yards that are lower. So again, I just really appreciate council's dealing with this along with the bike pad needs. Thank you.
Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yeah, I'm going to completely agree with Ms. Weaver on this. As somebody who grew up in the same house that I currently live in, I used to, as a, as a kid, have to ride down 38th to get down to be in F Tire Company pretty consistently during summer and things like that. And you're taking your life in your own hands. And that was 20 years ago, 25 years ago, way longer now than I thought. Okay. I'm sorry. Had a moment there. But, but this is, you know, there's a lot more kids in this area now than there had been over the last 10 or 15 years, as, as Ms. Hulteen was talking about, as local works and was working on their grant here. There's a lot of kids in these neighborhoods that are trying to get to Prospect Valley, trying to get to Color Strand, trying to get to some of the other child priority, different daycares, things like that, up and down here. This is becoming a very dangerous situation for the, for this area. So we've, and Ms. Weaver and I have done five district meetings since, since I've been elected, I think. And every single time we have people coming and asking, when is this going to get done? We've had, I don't think anybody come and say, we don't want it to happen. So this is something that's going to have public support and something that's very much needed in this area. So I hope that council will help move this forward. And I agree with the separation because this end of 38th is much different than, than the East end of 38th as well. One thing I do think we need to keep in mind, too, as we talk about bike and pad, and Mr. Johnson said that we also need to look at some of the traffic. Clear Creek Crossing is opening up right at the end of this. So this is going to be drawing a lot of people from those neighborhoods, both walking, biking, and driving that area. So we want to make sure that we probably keep that in mind as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Would the water and drainage infrastructure improvements be eligible for the American Rescue Plan funds? Could we apply for those for this project? Or how would that process work?
We don't have clear direction on if stormwater conveyances are allowed yet. We're trying to get that direction. The, the bill was specific to water and wastewater, not stormwater. But there was some language in the bill that's, that they use the word stormwater. So we're still waiting for final direction on that. But it could be.
Before I go to you, Ms. Hulteen, I had a question myself, and I'll be back to you. Mr. Johnson, do you think this is something that we might be able to work with Mile High Flood District for some matching funding on?
Yeah. And Steve may want to speak to this as well. But, you know, Mile High Flood District in, in general is just an excellent partner, and we have a great relationship with them. And, you know, they're, they're always seeking to leverage joint funding opportunities. So I think absolutely.
Okay. Good. Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you. And Patrick, do you mind going back to the aerial view and kind of scaling out? So when I was just your average citizen and not on council, I worked and actually did all of the data collection for the Activate 38. So I am incredibly familiar with the conditions of this corridor and a couple of things that are really important to me. First of all, it, it might not be as obvious from the satellite view, but I don't know if a map view is available or not. 38th, this particular corridor is unique from the other segments of 38th in that there are no other east-west options between Kipling and Youngfield. Nothing else goes completely east-west through there. So if you are traveling, connecting with transit, riding a bike or walking, it is your only option if you want to connect with a lot of the important amenities, whether they're schools, the hospital, shopping, transit. So the corridor fundamentally has to work for people who aren't in a car because it is literally their only option. Nothing else connects. When we were working on the grant and we literally stood on the corridor for hours, and I remember, Bud, you and I did a, a walking audit of the corridor, we stood and actually did intercepts with people who were out walking. And there are people who live on the north side of the corridor within a couple hundred feet of the park. These are kids whose parents won't let them cross the street and walk to the park because it's too dangerous. So, so for me, for us to do this corridor planning, it really, I, I understand the drainage issues and, and I believe that whatever we do will solve both problems. But doing this without recognizing that we have to, we have to create a safe environment for people who are walking and rolling, we're, we're not improving the corridor if we don't do that. From, all the way from Kipling to Wadsworth, it can't be a segment. It's got to be a, a safe corridor, and it has to be safe to cross. Because there's a lot of, the demographics on that corridor when we were doing our demographic study disproportionately rely on transit, walking, and biking for their transportation. And there are also a lot of people who have disabilities who actually are unable to drive and really rely on being able to safely access the transit. The city's done some improvement to the transit stops since we initially did the work. But if you are in a wheelchair and you rely on transit to access shopping services that you need, that corridor is, is really inaccessible. So I'm, I'm kind of, I mean, this is just something I'm really passionate about from the get-go. But in this corridor in particular, it, to me, it's the least accessible corridor that's not a state facility in our, in our city. And it is surrounded by community members who are disproportionately dependent on that corridor, working for them if they don't have a car. So I think it is a huge priority. And to Ms. Dozeman's point, there are some funding opportunities that if we're able to get this corridor planning done quickly, that we might be able to be eligible to apply for some of those funds to expedite some of the improvements. And then I guess I'd like to say, lastly, so, I mean, if you're looking at it, you can see there's some segments of 35th, but because of some of the great assets in our communities, such as Lena Gulch and the Clear Creek and schools, there just is no other east-west access. When we're talking about doing a transportation study to look at what some of the other needs are, transportation studies historically and ubiquitously are led by needs of people who are driving cars. And the corridor ultimately has to function for people driving cars. But in this corridor study, if we aren't leading with looking at making sure that this corridor works for people who aren't in cars, if a transportation study usurps the needs of people who depend on that corridor for transit, walking, biking, rolling, then that, that transportation study is not going to serve our community's needs. So it's really important, if we're looking at the other vehicular access, both currently as well as our long-term planning, if, if it's at the expense of the people who need sidewalks, then it's, it's, it's not a corridor that's serving our community. So I just, it's really obviously important to me, but it's also important to our residents. I have some really compelling and powerful videos of kids and families that we've interviewed along that corridor that can't access the park across the street. So anyway, I'd love to see this moving forward, moving forward quickly. And I, I'd love to, for us to access some of the abundance of federal funding right now to solve these problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver.
Thank you. And thank you, Counselor Hulteen, for bringing up your experience from the Activate 38 studies. I was just curious, Mr. Johnstone, or, or Steve, what does it look like? Because all along 38th in that corridor, it is electric poles, and it seems like the street itself is very narrow. What, and I'm, and I'm not asking for a design. I'm just sort of not understanding completely what it looks like to redo a street and add curb and gutter and all of that. Do those assets get put underground? Do they get moved farther out? Like what? I, I'm just curious. What, what are the expectations of something like that when you have open air electricity? I don't know what it's called.
We anticipated that the overhead line, as you can see, I think, if you remember correctly, it runs the entire run. The only places where there's no, or being buried is in front of recent commercial developments and very recent single-family subdivisions. Those are the only spots that you see buried underground. The rest of the way, it's all aerials. Or based on underground projects with Excel in the past, those are very high costs when you ask them to do so. So you got a stretch of 1.75 miles that when you start counting the cost of that, it's going to be cost prohibitive. So most likely, we're going to ask Excel to relocate those power poles that when we have a finished, select the designs such, and they should be able to move them out afterward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional, Ms., Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Our, do you think the street is going to stay like two lanes? Because on the other side of, like Wadsworth, you know, or it's like, you know, turn lane in the middle, kind of a thing like that. I was wondering about the power lines. But also on 38th East, the stormwater or the drainage, is it, it's just on one side of the street, isn't it? Like, for, you know, because I walk by and I see the grates full of stuff, like on one side of the street. So would the drainage be on both sides of the street or just on one? Because I do see the ditches on one side of the street, like now, over here. And I'm wondering also, I was kind of reading that there's a possibility that maybe some land needs to be gotten from people's houses or something like that. So if you're going to have the street and bike lanes on both sides, like what size of a sidewalk are you talking about? I mean, that could be like a lot of land, too.
This would probably be a, a tag team effort in terms of response, but you're absolutely right. There's, I mean, there's limited right of way. It's between 50 and 60 feet, which, you know, does give you the, the ability to certainly add additional facilities. But there, there likely would be at least locations where additional right of way might need to be acquired, and that would be part of the process. In, in terms of drainage, you know, we've talked a little bit about that, and Steve may be able to speak to this more. I mean, I think from an efficiency standpoint, you know, having the, the drainage facilities on one side of the street versus two, that's a more efficient design, but not, not always feasible, depending on how water is moving, because water moves as it sees fit. You know, but I, in terms of the particulars of design, you know, I think we try and get the facility up to our minimum standards in terms of, you know, our minimum sidewalk width is five feet. We prefer six feet, particularly on a collector. We prefer detached versus attached. But again, all those are, are design challenges that we'll have to work through, through the design process and the iterations. In terms of lane capacity, you know, I can't imagine that we're, we're talking about adding additional through lane capacity. I think what we want to analyze as part of a traffic analysis for the corridor is, is whether we need enhanced intersections in any locations in terms of, of turn lanes, or, as you suggest, you know, the, evaluate the possibility that we'd need a continuous turn lane. But Steve, please, please add.
Yeah, on average, along the corridor, I think we have about currently 60 feet of right of way. And like Ken said, I think for the most part, we should be able to utilize that 60 feet for a lot of good portion of it. But there'll be certain places where we may need more. For example, here at 38th and Parfitt. If, when we're doing our analysis, when we find that if there's sufficient left turn traffic that warrants left turn lane, then obviously we got to have to include left turn lane to the intersection. And that may add more right of way that we're going to need to accommodate that. So overall, two lanes, you, you may find that may mid-block somewhere that it could fit. But certainly in a section where there's a significant amount of left turn lane, we'll probably need that third lane, and therefore we may need additional right of way at that location. As far as drainage, the standard design, we would call for storm sewer and inlets to drain water off to the side. I believe urban drainage study, this is a collector street doing a major storm, you should be able to maintain one lane of traffic under flooding condition for traffic to pass. Therefore, the water that we would design is to have inlets and pipes to drain water off to the side with the curb and gutter on both sides. That's how we're going to do that.
Thank you. Ms. Counselor Nosler Beck.
Thanks. I just wanted to jump in because I haven't said anything yet, and I think everybody else has. So, thanks, Steve. The thing that I wanted to add, though, was to Councilmember Hulteen's point about the residents who are living in that area needing to be able to access, you know, just some of the basic needs that they have. The city has built in a pretty incredible infrastructure with Sprouts there and also Sprouts at the East Side, and then with King Supers, and now all of the shopping that's available in Clear Creek Crossing. If we can make that a, a walkable or rollable corridor, there's, there's really- there's really an opportunity for us to start looking at other types of transportation outside, outside of just cars, too. And so I'm just in full support of this. One other thing that I've, I've just noticed is with the sidewalks on the east side of 38th, being pretty complete there, Discovery Park just has more accessibility, and it's an awesome skate park, but you can't actually skateboard there from 38th Avenue on the west side. So we should probably just continue that vision there. So, thanks.
Further questions or discussion? Counselor Hulteen?
Sorry, I've been waiting yours to talk about this. So I, I do hope, as somebody who's done a lot of community engagement around corridor planning, there is always a sense of fatigue when people keep getting asked a question about something and then nothing happens. So I really encourage city staff when they are getting ready to move forward with this and considering what they put into the RFP, to please look at the outcomes and recommendations from the Activate 38, because there is a lot of both quantitative and qualitative data in there, so that we're not having to duplicate a lot of that, because there, that could kind of add to a sense of frustration. To that end, I was able to pull up on my computer here, just a reminder of the three pri, or the four primary outcomes of the Activate 38 study, is one is that the residents wanted to make it safer to cross the street. That was one of their, their primary things that they wanted, and that's done through crosswalks, bulb-outs, and other, other design elements. Their second priority was slow cars down. If it's slower for cars, then no matter how you're using the street, it's safer for everybody. The third outcome that the community members identified was improve the sense that the street is a place for people, not just for cars. That's done through design and facilities. And then the fourth outcome that the community members prioritized was buffer cars from people who are walking, biking, and rolling. So, so we do have some data already that we can start with as guidelines, and hopefully make the corridor planning process a little bit more efficient. But I know there's a lot of data that came from that plan. I'm happy to provide whatever I have. As we do that, like, are you guys looking at literally like from Kipling to Youngsville, like doing the entire corridor, or are you pulling it in a little bit since improvements have already happened at the east and west end from it?
The intent would be to look at the whole corridor, but acknowledging certainly that significant improvements have been, have been done, particularly on the western portion of it. So, you know, it's, it's not likely that as, as many changes would be anticipated. But I think from a design standpoint, we want to look at that whole corridor. We do also, as, as council, I'm sure is aware, have money in this year's capital budget to improve the intersection of 38th and, and Kipling. And, and that, that project has been designed, and really is ready to go out to bid in the early part of, of, of next year. So that obviously would, would be a, a known quantity as well, in terms of those improvements.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppe?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So currently, we don't have any funding budgeted for this project. And a, as I, as I'm looking in the memo, it looks like a 30% plan would be, is, so it says master plan $700,000 up to $1 million. Is that a 30% plan, or is that a complete plan would cost us that much?
Yeah, the, the $700,000 is the, what we're calling alternatively a, a master plan or a concept plan, but 30% plans.
30% plan, okay. And, but it does note that there, that it could be appropriated from current sources of revenue that's in our budget. So process-wise, we would just have to do a supplemental budget request?
Yes, correct. Yeah, we, we have adequate reserves in the general fund at this point. And we have more dollars coming, as Councilmember Dozeman mentioned, but we have many sort, enough sources to, to fund both the 30% design and the final design, I believe. It's the construction, which, you know, this is a very high-level estimate of 15 millions. Don't hold us to that number, please. We have no design done, but it, you know, who knows what the final number, that's a very high-level estimate. But we're recommending, or I'm recommending at least, that that type of, of budget would probably require another bond issuance from the city, and as we did with 2E for the Wadsworth and Clear Creek Crossing and Anderson Park and, and the TODs area. So, you know, I think the timing is, is, is pretty, pretty good. Our, our 2E bonds are set to, or the, the temporary sales tax, we believe is set to expire in 2024, because we'll raise our 38 and a half million. I think this would be a great opportunity to go to the voters and ask them for an extension of that temporary sales tax for this, maybe a few other projects.
And can you just, just remind me quickly, or remind all of us, what a 30% plan, a design plan really gives you? Like, I know it gives you a, a, a better target for a budget. It gives you some concepts, some, you know, basic concepts, and then perhaps a plan on how to move forward with public outreach. But am I missing anything in there? Is there more that that gives, gives us, 30% plan?
Yeah. Typically, the 30% help us better define what we're up against, flush out all the design challenges that translate to additional cost. Definitely is a good starting point for us to get to that level, so we can identify the costs needed, and be able to flush out all the, some of the unknowns that we do not have yet known at this point. But I think it, it served enough for us to decide and proceed with the final design after that, and be able to tell us, okay, so you got this long stretch, how many phases? And in terms of construct season, that is optimal for you to proceed minimizing the impact, recognizing we have school season, we have construction season, we don't have that 12-month constructability. So those, with that 30% plan, that will help us guide in terms of what would be the optimal phasing, and how are you going to do that, and at the same time, identify the challenges, and be able to provide us some costs to start doing some programming, particularly for the construction piece of it.
I, I just feel that this is super important for us to move forward with the 30% design plan. So I might ask for consensus to direct staff to pursue the master planning process through a budget supplemental appropriation and request for proposals for design consulting services.
Good, good. Okay, great. I want to go to Mr. Counselor Ohm.
One question I had is, I haven't walked 38th on the, on the west side, so I don't understand all the, the details. But the one question I do have is, I understand that there's some areas where there's some culverts, which means that the grade might be pretty steep on the, on the other side. I just want to know if, if there's going to be, if we could have some consideration for edge protection along some of those sidewalks, that even though the height might not need some type of fence or rail, but that we don't have a really steep slope on the, you know, from the, in the right-of-way, from like the, the future sidewalk going towards the residences. So we don't have a situation where it's, it's really steep and we've met the criteria of, you know, I just, I'm just, I have some concerns about like the culvert, how that meshes up with the culvert. Is that culvert going to, the ditch, is that going to get buried? Is that a consideration? Do you, do you understand what I'm kind of saying?
I think I do. Let me give it a stop and see if I answered your question. Typically, in a design, when we survey the site, we survey to the property line and beyond that. And once we lay out a design, we, our goal is to match both sides. And if we are doing away with the roadside ditch and culverts, we replace it with curb and gutter. And typically, we try to lay it in a way where it balances, minimize the grade drop-off from adjacent property on both sides. So we try to balance that. Once we've done that, we got to determine if there's a, even a drop-off behind that, if it's higher, then we will have to provide some sort of railing for protection. But typically, we aim for minimizing that drop-off and just more of general grading to match the property yard or something of that nature.
Thank you. No further questions? Thank you. Well, we've got consensus to move forward. Is there anything else that you're looking for, direction on? Okay. All right, thank you. Well, that'll conclude item number one. Thank you. Thank you for a good discussion on that. We will go to staff reports. Mr. Goff?
Nothing really else this evening. Just a heads up, kind of exciting news, talking about money and cash and dollars. Tyler Carlson and his team are going to come next Monday night to present the city with a reimbursement, $10 million, for the, the Hook Ramp Project at Clerker Creek Crossing. So we thought it would be a great time to really come and celebrate this triple P, public-private partnership. And this, this project has really been a success, and excited about where it's at. So those dollars, we will have a discussion in the future with council on how council would like to spend those and maybe leverage those with other funds that we're seeing from, from the federal and state level at this point. So that's, that's it this evening. Plus, Ken, can you have anything for the council?
All right. Thank you. We will then go to elected officials' reports. Do anyone have a report to report? Counselor Hulteen?
Thank you, Mayor Starker. So I, last Thursday, along with a lot of other Americans, watched the live broadcast of Annie. And I've, of course, been singing Annie show tunes for the last week. I'm not going to sing, I promise. I don't watch broadcast TV very often, so I don't see very many commercials. And I was absolutely beyond delighted and thrilled when I saw Domino's commercial, national commercial, that featured Grammy's goodies, a District Two business right here in Wheat Ridge. And it was just something that I, like, it was one of these moments where I was like, whoa, wait a minute. I, that's, she won one of our Good Neighbor District, yeah. I was like, I should watch TV more often. No.
That one's there on Saturday.
But anyway, just, it was just such a delightful moment of recognizing that Wheat Ridge can, can make, make national platforms, because we do good things and we have great businesses. And I'm just very, Wheat Ridge proud, District Two proud. And if you haven't been to Grammy's goodies, you are missing some pretty spectacular things to, to eat. So anyway, just very proud of Grammy's goodies. And I might mention it again next Monday at the city council meeting, because it deserves a big audience. So anyway, that was it.
All right. Additional elected officials' reports. Counselor Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank the City of Wheat Ridge Parks and Rec and Local Works for putting on the tree lighting ceremony this last Saturday. It was a great opportunity for families to get together. We loved the horse-drawn carriage and the barrel ride. We were a little disappointed in how few arts and crafts were available for kiddos this year, and how few businesses along 38th Avenue participated, as opposed to years past. And I kind of feel like we're just getting back into the swing of things after COVID, and that, that probably might, that might be why. But I did check out Four Seasons Market off of 38th and Teller, and they have a fantastic little shop, a lot of local vendors, and they set up a little vendor market, a couple shops down at the Chamber, the Wheat Ridge Chamber Commerce Office. And so I got a couple homemade goodies, a couple presents. And so if you're looking to shop local, definitely check out Four Seasons Market. They have wonderful, they, they offer eggs, they offer desserts, lots of homemade trinkets. So give our local businesses your money this Christmas season. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to say I participated in the event that the police department had for the Toys for Kids. And it, it looked like it was a good turnout over there at Walmart. So I, I hope that it, it's a good thing for all these kids that need to get some toys. I also am wondering, is it okay to ask a question about things, a couple of things constituents have asked me about, for example?
Always, yeah. I mean, either if, if you don't want to, you can call me or email me, or do it right now, too.
Okay, if, for two years, the largest items that I have heard about are crime, traffic, and safety. So if crime happens to occur, and somebody calls for the police, is it the office at Wadsworth and Alameda that answers those calls and states, do an online, you know, claim or whatever like that? Because what if people don't have a computer?
Yes, we, we do have a regionalized communication center at, at this point. And so all calls that go to 911 do go to that center. But we do have our former communication dispatchers who worked here work currently, work there. So, but I, I know what issue you're, you're speaking about. I got the letter in the mail today, and I talked to the chief about it, and that's, issue's been taken care of. The chief spoke with the victim and the case and the, and the neighbor, and they're satisfied with the results, I think. And they're checking with communication center to make sure that there was no lapse in, in communication on this issue. But yes, you're, yep.
And also about the traffic, this just keeps going on and on and on. And I know even Mayor and I, we filled out a petition regarding a pedestrian crossing at 29th and Fenton, and haven't heard anything. I have seen traffic trailers that are up on different streets, but then, even in residential areas, but then I don't ever hear anything too much after that. I believe that there's a city somewhere, and I don't know if it's Denver or not, is considering decreasing the speed of traffic in neighborhoods to, like, instead of 25 to 20 miles an hour. Because I know even down 35th Avenue, there's cars that are going 50 miles an hour. And it's just, you know, it is a safety issue with, you know, people walking and how fast the traffic is. And I know it's the number-one thing that everybody's complaining about, but I think we have to do something about it.
We, we did have, do we have an update? We did, we're looking for some funding from CDOT for a flashing light at the 29th and Fenton, and I don't believe that we were awarded that contract, but I'm not sure that anyone, anyone was. Do we, do you know anything about that, Steve?
Yeah, we made an attempt to apply for a Main Street grant.
Right.
Into the traffic impact. But I think as we had submitted our project on several like co-location, we found that they, the, the grant is heavily favor of higher volume user street, more of a commercial corridor. And we felt that with taking a stop at a 529th and Fenton area, that scoring would probably be weak to win something like that. And, and further discussion on that, and I'm, you know, working with Patrick here, is that something that if we're not successful with the Main Street grant because of the, how they scored, we were running, if we could fund it through city funding to, number one, to install the RRF crossing at 29th and Fenton. Number two is to install that radar active speed zone in between about Fenton to about Gray on 29th Avenue.
I hope you're going the other way, 29th about Benton Street, but...
Well, I take it, I, maybe we could cover a little bit wider range of that.
Maybe a little wider than that, okay.
But we've been receiving calls, you know, over the past year or so, it's kind of, kind of zooming into about between Gray and, and Eaton. But I think that with, if we have, if we have that radar speed zone, we can extend it a little bit farther to kind of keep that zone in check.
Because I have people passing me, passing me at about 29th and, and Chase or DePew doing about 50 or 60. There. Okay, Ms. Hulteen, and then Ms. Hoppe?
I'd like to just add to Ms. Hutchinson's comments. In the next week, Denver is actually downgrading their residential spread limit from 25 to 20. So that'll be happening citywide. It does take a while, but that is a trend that is about to happen just east of us in a pretty big way. It does dawn on me that that could be something that could be included in the neighborhood traffic management study update that is proposed, hopefully that we can get done next year. So I'm just curious, from staffing perspective, do you think a...
So I'm just curious from staffing perspective, do you think evaluating residential speed limits and speed limits on collectors is something we could include in revising our neighborhood? Or should we separate that out from the neighborhood traffic management program if we're considering revising our residential speed limits?
My personal opinion on that is should be separated because dropping 20 mile per hour, you know, you have to look at the legal aspect. I would hope that, you know, police enforcement, police department would have some input into that. I just don't understand or fully would understand the legality in and out from an enforcement perspective. So I think that that should have a discussion of its own.
Okay. Judy, are you interested in adding that to our study session list? Okay, I second Judy in adding that.
That list is getting long. We can do that.
Counselor Hoppe.
I just, I just wanted to add also that I looped in one of the council members in Edgewater for some of the issues that we're having along 26th and Mike Gray area too. So those conversations are being, are being spoken about, I guess, are happening. Those conversations are happening and we're, you know, working with our border communities with those two on the kind of our border streets.
Thank you. Counselor Hutchinson.
To that issue, there is a pedestrian crosswalk like at 26th and Ingalls, I think. And they were talking about 26th and Gray. That's only two blocks. So to cross the street, the blinking.
I'm just saying that area in general and the fact that we shared a border with Edgewater and that we've also looped in their city councilors on that, not specifically that specific street, that area.
Mr. Goff.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. If I could just add to Councilmember Hutchinson's comments, you know, traffic issues are very widespread across the whole city, taken care of. And we need to address them. I'm not saying that we shouldn't, but it's not isolated just to one area for sure. And I did ask the chief to focus on neighborhood speeding enforcement and they are working on a program. They're hopefully going to roll out soon. I think your comment about Judy not hearing anything back, we use speed trailers as a tool to get some enforcement and attention, awareness, I guess, in neighborhoods. But, and then we also, we also do actual patrol with police officers in neighborhoods, but sometimes it's during the day and the neighbors don't see it. They don't think we're ever doing anything. So that's part of the program, the police department, they're going to do community outreach, neighborhood outreach to troubled areas in the community that have speed issues, work with those neighbors, let them know when they're going to be there so that there's an awareness that speed enforcement is happening. And so we haven't started it yet, but hopefully that will start out for the first of the year to get more into the neighborhoods. You know, just from talking from the, to the chief, you know, they'll go out, I know everybody believes speeding is an issue and it definitely is. I know there are some speeding on my streets, which drives me crazy if there's no sidewalks. But, you know, we can go sit out in the neighborhood sometimes and, you know, we only catch four people in an eight hour period, right? Or a lot of the times, it's the people that live in those neighborhoods. Most of the times, it is the people that live in those neighborhoods. So it's very complicated and we're always, we're hearing about it in almost every corner of the city. And, you know, I think, I think somebody brought up, was it Councilmember Stites? I don't, I don't know if he wanted to bring it up in a meeting, but there was, I think a constituent brought it up to you maybe about red light or photo radar. Some cities do it. Councilmember Dozeman shaking her head. Previous councils have looked at it here years ago and it didn't go anywhere and it's been kind of attacked statewide by the legislature. But, but that's, it's a tool. We can't have an officer on every residential street every day. So it's just not possible. Anyway.
That brings us just about to the close of our meeting. I would like to, did you have something else, Ms. Weaver?
Yes, I just wanted to thank council and staff tonight for bringing up this issue. It's been a huge issue for me and Mr. Stites and we just really appreciate all the thoughtful comments and effort because I think it'll make that corridor towards everyone's comments tonight. We just really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody that was able to come Saturday night to light the Christmas tree. I thought it was a very well attended and very well structured event. And I want to thank the, not only the citizens that came, but the city staff and local works and everybody that worked hard to put that together. Thank you all. It was a great event. And there's coffee with the mayor next Saturday morning at nine o'clock at Vinolus. If you'd like to come and join me for a cup of coffee, we'd love to have you come and talk. So if there's no more business to come before council, we will adjourn our study session and we will be back next week at seven o'clock for a regular meeting. Good night. Have a safe week.